Chair?
Here.
Chair Kelly?
Here. Commissioner reports. Let's start with Commissioner Cruz.
All right. On May 17th, I attended the Northwest Parkland Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting. On May 18th...
The, sorry. The PSE Real Estate Conference, May 20th, Northwest District, excuse me, the Northwest District Association Annual Meeting, May 23rd, Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber Board Meeting, May 30th, I attended a fundraiser for Neighbors West-Northwest, and on June night, I attended the City Club Friday Forum with Kimberly Brannan.
I attended a number of Broadway Corridor meetings and a meeting with Dela South North.
Commissioner Myers?
On April 22nd, sorry, I wasn't here for the May meeting. So, April 22nd, I attended the Asian Health Service Center Groundbreaking, May 18th, the Prosper Portland Broadway Corridor Steering Committee kickoff, on May 26th, the Construction Apprenticeship Workforce Solutions reconvening, June 7th, the Broadway Corridor Steering Committee meeting number two, and June 9th, the City Club event featuring our own Kimberly Brannan.
So, let's see, I think I attended two different Broadway Corridor Executive Committee meetings, and one mayor's check-in, and of course, the City Club where our executive director acquitted herself well. So, that's my report. Kimberly?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Kelly, Commissioners. So, it's been a busy month here. Kicked it off with the Oregon International Business Awards and Counselor Corps Scholarship Gala, so I guess that was in middle of May, and then, the Rosewood Initiative, Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative reopened its community center on May 25th. Prosper Portland will contribute up to $250,000 for the new center through the Rosewood Initiative Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative District. We've been really proud to be able to support that, and under the leadership of Jenny Glass, Rosewood has really come into the ability to fulfill its mission to make the neighborhood healthy, safe, and prosperous, so congratulations to them for reopening. The Cully Farmers Market opened on June 1st. This is a market of, I'm sorry, this is a project of R-42nd, which is also a Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative District. It runs every Thursday from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. from June through August, and 4:00 to 7:00 in September in the heart of R-42nd. Prosper Portland also announced 11 technical assistance providers that will participate in our newly formed Small Business Technical Assistance Partnership, so thank you to Commissioner Cruz for his participation in the selection. You'll recall that the goal of the Small Business Technical Assistance Partnership, or SB TAP as we call it, is to bring multiple services for small businesses into a single network with the desired outcomes of having 1,000 businesses strong and stabilized by 2020. For fiscal year 1718, we will be investing just around $2.5 million into this partnership, and we'll be investing in the following 11 partners, so Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, Hacienda CDC, Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber, Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization, Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, NEA, Oregon Native American Chamber, Portland Incubator Experiment, Portland State University, Thai Oregon, and Accelerate. So, we're really looking forward to working with them to help strengthen local businesses, whatever those business needs are. Prosper Portland also last week announced $300,000 in community livability grants awarded to projects in the Interstate Corridor Urban Renewal area. This aligns with the North Northeast Community Development Initiative priorities, and so we have great projects that honor the areas' culture and history, provide greater access to community centers, improve business and marketing services for microenterprises, and support the creation of Portland's first African-American museum. So, you can find more about that on our website. As was mentioned, I had the opportunity to speak at last week's City Club Forum, and would like to thank the City Club for that opportunity, and for Stephen, to Stephen Green for moderating the discussion. If you missed the event and want to learn more, you can do so at our website, which is prosperportland.us. Also, last Friday, we had the formal launch of the Women Sleeping Pod Village in Kenton. So, you'll recall that Prosper Portland granted the use of a property that we own for this purpose for one year, and the Sleeping Pod Village will provide shelter and services to 14 formerly houseless women. This has been a partnership with Catholic Charities, the City of Portland, the Joint Office of Homeless Services, the Village Coalition, and Portland State University School of Architecture, Center for Public Interest Design. So, really proud to be able to participate and support that good work, and I think we will continue to see these kinds of partnerships in various places around the city, so looking forward to that. In the month ahead, a lot going on, so tonight, we look forward to attending VOZ's annual dinner with a number of colleagues. Prosper Portland continues to have productive conversation with VOZ to clarify and refine our letter of intent. We are also beginning to go over the elements of a special authority grant with those partners. Prosper Portland is participating tomorrow with Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce's Employment, Business, and Resource Fair at the Doubletree Hotel. You can visit hmccoregan.com for more information about that. And the next North Northeast Community Development Initiative Oversight Committee will convene on Tuesday, June 27th. Those are open to the public, and that's taking place on, at the New Song Community Center. Again, all of these are available on our website if you want more information about time. So, finally, I'd like to recognize three new colleagues who have joined us, who are here with us today. So, first, Ian McLeod is here with us, and he joined Prosper Portland on May 22nd. He is our new real estate marketing and leasing coordinator. He's been a broker for the last nine years. He's represented clients ranging from sole proprietors to nationally recognized development firms within retail, office, industrial, multifamily, and land transactions. Ian received the 2016 Bill NATO Award for successfully closing the most complex real estate transaction of the year representing women's healthcare associates in Gateway. He's a graduate from Portland State University where he received a Bachelor's of Science in real estate, and is actually an experienced carpenter. He began his career with a construction, in a construction firm in Newburgh, Oregon, so we're really pleased to have Ian with us. Next, we have Sean Murray, who is our new HR Director. As of this Monday, June 12th, he most recently served as Chief Human Resources Officer at Portland Public School. He had a significant team and oversaw the entire resource professionals and of the seven, to support the 7,000 employees within PPS. Prior to that role, Sean served as the Police Human Resource Manager for Portland Police Bureau, and as a Labor Relations Coordinator and Human Resources Coordinator for the Bureau of Human Resources at the City of Portland. He serves on the Board of the Urban League of Portland and Building Blocks for Success. He has a Bachelor's in Sociology from California State University Chico, so we're really delighted to have Sean and his leadership and his expertise here with us. And finally, Kelly Hardell joined Prosper Portland also on Monday. She's the new Procurement Services Coordinator in our Finance and Business Operations Department. Kelly comes to us with 18 years of experience in contracting procurement and grant administrations from Oregon Health and Sciences University. Her experience at OHSU included all aspects of the organization from healthcare, administration, research, and academics. For example, Kelly successfully led the contracting for the FFNE, for the Collaborative Sciences Building, so that was quite a large undertaking. And prior to working in OHSU, her experience included consumer lending and business development at local credit unions, so we're delighted to have Kelly here.
Welcome to all of you. Our next order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes of the May 10th, 2017 meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Motion carries. We have Consent Agenda items six and seven, which I can accept.
We don't have any.
If we don't have anybody signed up, then we don't have anyone, so we can go beyond that. Thank you. Consent Agenda, items six and seven. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, and we have a time certain to move to the TSCC meeting, and I'm a little bit early, so are they here? If they want to come in, we can go ahead and proceed. Welcome. So, first, I need to, to change from the Commission meeting to this, so the Prosper Portland Commission will now recess in order to convene the Tax Supervising Conservation Commission Public Hearing on the Prosper Portland Fiscal Year 2017-18 Approved Budget. So, welcome to everyone. I think we usually go through introductions, is that our...
We're getting the gavel out so we can actually start. There we go, now it's official.
Okay.
Guy's got to have his gavel.
Got to have a gavel.
Oh, you have your own, yes. Okay, so you're in recess now, okay?
Yes.
All right. So, I, so I'll call to order the annual Prosper Portland Budget Hearing. My name is David Behringer, and I'm the Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission, and I welcome you all to our hearing. I will now ask my fellow Commissioners and the TSC staff to introduce themselves, and if any Commissioner has a business relationship with the district that could be perceived as a conflict of interest, please identify that.
Good afternoon, I'm Margot Norton. This is my second year on the Commission. I am presently retired, but my career was in government finance.
Hello, I'm James Offsink. This is my, also my second year on the Commission, and professionally, I work at OHSU.
My name is Mark Wilbold. This is my first year on the Commission. I work at Portland State University in the President's Office. I'm a Senior Policy Analyst.
I'm Brendan Watkins. This is my fifth year on the Commission, and I serve as a banker for Piper Jaffray.
I'm Craig Gibbons, Staff to the Commission.
Tony Burchard, Staff.
Great. We are conducting this hearing as a service to the district and the public. The purpose of our hearing is to promote public discussion of the budget. The Commission wants this discussion to promote thoughtful consideration of current and future budget issues. The Commission is responsible for evaluating the district's budget process. At the conclusion of our meeting, we will certify the degree to which the district's process conformed to Oregon local budget law. The district will make the first presentation this morning, then the Commission will ask several questions and discuss the budget with you. Following our discussion, we will take testimony from the public.
The sign-up sheet is outside the door.
Okay, and that's the sign-up sheet. With that, I'll let you make your introductions.
We have here at the head table Executive Director Kimberly Brannan, Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Edlin, and Commissioner Cruz.
Great, welcome, welcome, Director Brannan. I'll turn it over to you for introductory remarks, Chair Kelly.
Well, I have to say, this will be my last time that I...
Oh, you're leaving us.
...get to interact with you. At the end of this month, I will have my last meeting, so I want to say thank you for your work in these last three years that I've been chairing the Commission.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you for thanking me. Let's go ahead and get started.
Okay, so we'll break right into our questions then. All right, so I have the first one. Executive Director Brannan, as I said, welcome to the, to our hearing. Can you tell us what you're learning about Prosper Portland, and some of your hopes for the coming year, and what you would like to have accomplished by this time next year?
Sure, so thank you for the opportunity. So, as you know, and as the question recognizes, I was Deputy Director before taking on the role as Executive Director, and so there were a lot of things that I knew very well coming into this position. Amongst those, I knew very well our strategic plan, as I had played a role in crafting the strategic plan. And so, when I began in this new role nearly 10 months ago, I had great conversations with the board about doing a community engagement, basically thinking about how we engage with the community in a different way. And so, we did that in a pretty formalized way with some consultants who helped us do focus groups and polling, and one-on-one conversations, so that we could get a clear-eyed perspective of what, how we're perceived in the community, and what the impediments and opportunities are in terms of our collaboration. So, the result of that was to create a communications and engagement strategy, which was adopted by our board at the last meeting, and led to our new name, which is Prosper Portland. And so, some of the things that we learned there continue to really shape how, what some of my priorities are, so I can talk about that briefly. The first is to continue to focus on who's benefiting from the work that we're doing, so you'll continue to hear us ask the question, who benefits of every program and initiative and project that we undertake? And the second is really to showcase the impact of our work. So, within our website, you'll see a highlight on impacts and metrics, but that's something that we have, our policy team has a heightened focus on, and we're working with dialogues and action to really refine our metrics and think about how this work matters, and to refine our programs according to whether they're hitting the intended outcomes or not. And then, the third is to continue to try to make our organization more accessible. So, I think institutions can often feel kind of anonymous and distant, so one of the things that we're trying to do is really to be present, both as a board, as Executive Director, and my leadership team. On our new website, you'll see that there are pictures of staff. That's intentional, we want to be out there, we want this organization to feel like it's really something that belongs to the public, which it does. So, a year from now, you know, we hope that more Portlanders, especially Portlanders of color and those in East Portland, are aware of the work that Prosper Portland is doing, that they see our work as changing, and that they have positive experiences with us. A year from now, we will have updated our metrics. That will happen sooner than that, but we will have an updated story to tell, and so I'm looking forward to seeing that, and also seeing how that helps to continue with the evolution of our programs as we make refinements based on the impacts. And finally, through projects from the North Northeast Community Development Initiative, Broadway Corridor, ODOT blocks, many other projects and programs, we hope that the community can attest to our increased equitable approaches in the way that we're engaging with the community.
Great, thank you. Did any of those priorities have a direct effect on the budget that we're seeing today?
Great question. Yes, they did. I would say that, you know, one of the, I think most of the things that we're talking about in terms of engagement doesn't necessarily have a budgetary impact. There are some upfront costs associated with doing engagement in as robust a way as we intend, so there are resources, for example, within the Broadway Corridor budget that have been specifically allocated to do that outreach, but really, it's more about how we're doing it versus the budgetary decisions themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so what's in a name? I mean, this is my second year here. Last year, it was PDC. As Ms. Brannan mentioned, as part of your communication focus, you have arrived at a new name. So, I'm interested from the board members, people in the community are saying, so what's with the name? So, how does Prosper Portland reflect the vision of this agency and the change that is, it's undergoing as urban renewal itself changes? So, I would like to hear from the board.
This question is my job to take it on, and then if we have some other input, we'll, we'll get that. When the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners and City Council approved our 2015-2020 Strategic Plan, it reflected and codified a change in our agency's direction that has been taking place for some time, a transition from a traditional urban renewal agency to an economic development agency. We are now two years into the strategic plan and are proud of our work and accomplishments. That said, we felt that the name Portland Development Commission did not reflect the work that we are doing or the communities whom we serve today. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to undertake a communication strategy to identify ways that we could better communicate our work. After nearly six months of engagement in community, with community partners, which encompassed one-on-one interviews, focus groups, and citywide polling, we ultimately identified Prosper Portland as the name that best reflects who we are, what we do, and how we serve the citizens of Portland. I like to say that the most important thing is, is that we changed the agency dramatically first, and then we changed our name, as opposed to the other way around, and I think that's important. Any other comments?
Other comments? Would you have to give the 30-second elevator speech, and someone says, so what's with this name thing?
Personally, I just think it has more energy and optimism to it than the more institutional-sounding Portland Development Commission. I think it better reflects the, the spirit of the agency.
I think we're moving more and more towards social justice, and thinking about prosperity across the entire city, so it fits well with that.
And that, that reflects your idea of the vision of the agency and what we should be seeing reflected in your budget?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
I concur with everything everybody else is saying. It is definitely more of a focus, or more identifiable by the community to, to really see what we're actually about, so it's about prosperity.
So, your friends don't think you're a bank.
Who knows?
Thank you.
All right, so I continue on the theme of the new direction of the former PDC. How will the new Prosper Portland finance this new direction?
So, I'll take that one. Staff is currently finalizing the business plan that was drafted with assistance of the Financial Sustainability Committee that Tom spoke of, a committee representing a broad cross-section of Prosper Portland stakeholders, and presented it to the board last year. The draft business plan includes long-term projections on current funding sources, illustrating decline of new tax increment from current urban renewal districts through 2025. The plan looks towards several key areas for future funding that will help the organization pivot to concentrate on the goal of creating shared prosperity across the entire city. Resources of the plan focus on generating some return from a portion of the remaining TIF funds and existing real estate assets while delivering key policy and community goals. Types of investments can be summarized as, A, program-related investments, where we're maximizing public and community benefits and anticipating a return of between 0% and 5%. And B, more mission-related investments, where we are still requiring all key policy goals to be met, but programming a higher level return of perhaps 6% plus. The plan identifies new public funding in the form of future city property taxes, our return urban renewal areas, replay, repay all outstanding debt. The forecast and share of these resources was highlighted during the budget process with City Council.
So, I did a couple of follow-ups, but it sounded like you've kind of answered already about the implementation of the plan. So, I guess more directly is, is how is this reflected in this current budget, and then, if you can anticipate, how will we see it in the future budgets for the...
Yeah, I think it's, it's been an interesting process over the last couple of years, in that we're now looking at rates of return and how it affects, affects the entire portfolio of assets here at PD, at Prosper Portland.
A dollar.
Yep. And I think that's been a big shift in staff across the board. And if we're, we have conversations quite often about if we're going to do something that's going to be turned into, a loan that's going to turn into a grant, let's call it a grant. And if it's something that we're looking for financial returns, that the organization is dependent upon, let's make sure we enforce that, much like we would see on the private sector. So, I envision we're going to have assets that we'll dispose of that are, there's not, there's not a mission component to it, and we're looking to maximize return to taxpayers on those. And ones that do have a mission piece, we're looking to balance both the financial return as well as the return, non-financial return to the citizens.
Excellent, no, thank you. Yeah, we look forward to hearing more about your guys' review on your internal rates of return.
We do too.
Oh, looks like I do have the next question as well. So, as you've already kind of talked about it earlier, you know, the revenues that come into Prosper Portland are really divided into three different buckets. You have tax increment financing, grants, and then programmatic revenues. Now, the first two are dedicated revenues, and the program revenue, as we understand, is generally, it's discretionary. So, the tax increment funds can be used to develop properties, and those redeveloped properties are then available to be leased or sold. Does the lease income and/or sale proceeds then qualify as programmatic revenues? Or is that a, still kind of fit in that original TIF bucket, I guess?
I'll jump in on this one. Yes. We classify all lease and sell proceeds as program income or revenue. However, all proceeds are returned to the fund that originated the transaction. If TIF funds were used to originate the transaction, any program income received will be returned to the TIF fund, and must follow the same restrictions. Lacking specific ORS language on this, Prosper Portland has opted to take a conservative approach to this issue consistently during the life of districts.
So, just to add anecdotally, seeing some of the bad actors, I'm sure you guys are aware of, of different development commissions or, you know, certain other neighboring states of ours, it's nice to see you guys taking the conservative accounting approach, recognizing those revenues.
I have the next question. We understand that you have created a fund called the Portland Community Investment Fund this year. Although there's no mention of it in the budget, could you please tell us about that, the new fund, and how it fits into the Prosper Portland mission?
Sure. The draft long-term business plan identifies new market tax credits as a potential revenue stream to support Prosper Portland and the strategic plan goals. As a public organization, Prosper Portland is not eligible to apply for new market tax credits, so staff created the Portland Community Investment Fund as a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization that could apply for and be awarded new market tax credits. Should PCIF be awarded an allocation, it will support real estate projects in low-income communities across Portland and benefit neighborhoods outside of the urban renewal areas. As a 501(c)(3) PCIF, it is a separate organization and not subject to municipal budget law based on staff's consultation with the Prosper Portland auditors. The Department of Revenue and the TSCC staff, however, staff have created a forecast for resources and projected operating expenses over time.
Follow-up, please?
Yeah.
So, this is a separate 501(c)(3), subject only to the IRS regulations regarding nonprofit tax exemption. What is the, who is the governance of this 501(c)(3)?
We are.
So, you serve, you serve as the governing body?
Separating a separate, matter of fact, when we authorize that today, at the end of the, this meeting, we'll stop this meeting and reconvene. I'm, yes, thank you, adjourn and reconvene, and Commissioner Cruz is the Chair of that.
Right, so you are, this is the Governance Board of the 501(c)(3).
That's right.
Thank you.
So, there'll always be a separation of the budgets then between that organization and your organizations? We won't necessarily see that community fund in your budgets then, because they're separate?
I think that's right, although I don't think we would have any reason not to share the budget for that.
No, I mean, we anticipate, yeah, we anticipate, you know, showing all of our public records, and there's nothing that, you know, that, that is secretive about it.
But there'll be separate entities?
But they are separate entities, yeah.
I, I...
They are affiliate organizations. I'm looking at our CFO, because I feel like Fay could describe this more eloquently than I could.
[inaudible]
Yeah. Yeah.
[inaudible]
Yeah. Yeah.
will err on the side of still taking into consideration the objectives that we have of, for serving the community and meeting the target audience. And I think the advisory body that we've selected feels that way, and I would look to the executive director.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, at this point, you know, we anticipate and hope that we will get a new market tax credit allocation, and, but we don't know yet, right, what, when, and if that will happen. When it does, that's different than general procurement, right? But there probably would be some kind of competitive process, and so the commission will hear later today what the pipeline looks like in terms of who might be selected. But in order to secure the consultant for this body of work, we applied to regular, you know, we went through a competitive process, just as we would for any contractor.
So, and forgive my lack of knowledge about this, but the new market tax credits must be substantial, then, if the plan is to fund all of this organization's activity, or to reimburse Prosper Portland for 100 percent of the money that's being laid out?
Of the startup costs?
Yeah.
The startup costs are not, not best.
Yeah.
So, it's the work, the work that they're doing, is all... Can you answer?
Can't sing, though. It's on now. The work that we're doing right now is largely, the consultant that we've hired is helping to guide the application. So, the work that we've done to start the, to form the 501(c)(3), and now we're working on the application for new market tax credits. And so, as Kimberly said, it's not guaranteed that we'll get it. It's a competitive process throughout the country. And should we receive new market tax credits in the future, then we'll revisit the staffing allocation to see what would be necessary to be able to deploy those credits into projects for the community.
Thank you.
So, beyond paying for the staffing costs, the additional proceeds would go for what purpose?
The projects. And so, the new market tax credits are actually tax credits that would be applied toward projects in the community.
PDC has done a fair amount of projects over the years that involve new market tax credits. We just had a different entity that, Portland Family of Funds, that received the allocations and actually processed that. So, this is basically bringing it somewhat back in-house. And I served for 15 years, I think, on Citizens Advisory Committee for the new market tax credits projects, and there's a lot of federal oversight. And that's what the committee I served on was part of that process.
And the, my legal counsel is great, helping me out here, and he reminded me that the way that the 501(c)(3) receives operating funds is through the fees that it receives for deploying the new market tax credits. So, there is an operating source of revenue for the 501(c)(3) should an allocation be received.
And it'd also be eligible for donations, too, if it's a 501(c)(3), wouldn't it?
Is there anything?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Donations?
Would it also be eligible for donations as a 501(c)(3)?
Well, it would, and as a fine point that only a lawyer could love, that the entity right now is an Oregon nonprofit corporation seeking 501(c)(3) certification. I think, you know, again, a fine point, but yeah, it could receive donations.
James?
Yeah, thank you. So, one of the big kind of news and noteworthy items this year was the purchase of the post office site. We're hoping that you can tell us a little bit about what's going on in the 1718 budget for the site, and then a timeline for redevelopment of the property.
That one I'm going to take on. I think you are going to be handed a summary schedule.
Thank you.
And, you know, first, I want to say, this is probably one of the only reasons why I regret leaving the commission, is just how exciting this project is and how transformational it'll be for our city.
Yeah, it's huge.
It is. The key action in 1718 is to solicit and select a preferred development partner to assist in the forthcoming development planning efforts, initiation of a master plan, use process, and identification of community benefit priorities. Activities to support this work include project scoping with consultant team, legal counsel and executive committee advisors, commenced development of the planning efforts, and estimated cost for all of that is $250,000. A robust community engagement, including 42-member steering committee, which we've already assembled, and the creation of early implementation of a strategic communications strategy. Estimated cost for that is $100,000. And then, project due diligence regarding existing site conditions, interim reuse opportunities, and USPS retail retention options, which part of our obligation is to make sure there's a postal service facility in the area. And that estimated cost is $50,000. The post office, I think it's about a year from now that they hope to have their building completed. Is that a... Yeah. And which time we'll be taking possession of the buildings, and it's, this kind of project, as you can see, is, it's a long-term, you know, build-out maybe as much as 10 years?
Yeah, could be.
Yeah.
Could be longer. I mean, I think it will really depend on what's happening in the market, and so we'll know a lot more by, you know, in 2019.
The big key this coming year is to select the partner, their development partner.
The post office has a site picked out for their...
We're building, we're not building, they're building, out by the airport.
Oh, okay.
The Coldwood Golf Course, sort of the back end of that golf course. You see a bunch of construction there. That's the new post office facility.
So, that's great, thank you, and thank you for the handout. I know that this may be, you know, reflected down the line, probably next year's budget, but do we have a sense yet of what the funding source will be for the public portion of this development?
So, we'll take a multi-pronged approach. We have around $20 million that are set aside for infrastructure improvements. We anticipate that the Housing Bureau will identify an additional $50 million for the affordable housing portion. There will be probably SDC credits on transportation and parks, but those are yet to be determined. But the preponderance of resources will come from the private sector, you know, one, probably upwards of a billion dollars of resources. So, we will be working as we refine the master plan to really flesh out those full costs. But we have identified tax increment finance resources in the River District budget. But we also anticipate that through the land sales or the transaction with the development partner, that we will be able to reinvest some of the benefits of, or the land proceeds into the project as well. And you'll recall that we have a $40 million line of credit with the city, which was an important part of our ability to acquire the site. And so, the first $40 million of the land sale will actually go to take out the City Council interim loan.
Thank you.
I think you have the next question, too.
Okay, I'm just going to keep going here. So, we're wondering about the construction activity in Lentz. Can you tell us about Prosper Portland investments in the Lentz area, partners, costs, and timeline? I don't know if you have another fancy handout, Maureen.
We'll work on that.
Maybe next time.
Would you like fancy handouts on all the questions? Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau are investing more than $54 million in the Lentz Town Center via loans and direct investments. Based on priorities identified in the five-year Lentz Action Plan, four projects are in development for a total investment of more than $110 million. First, Prosper Portland is developing and will own a 54-unit mixed-use building at 9101 Southeast Foster with 16 income-restricted units and approximately 7,500 square feet of ground-floor retail. Prosper Portland and PHB have also partnered with the Palidrome Communities, the developers of Oliver Station, a multi-block and mixed-use project, which will include 145 units of housing, 126 which will be income-restricted. Oliver Station will also include 29,500 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. Both Oliver Station and Prosper Portland's project will offer commercial affordability opportunities. Both are under construction with expected completion near the end of 2017. Prosper Portland has also partnered with the Asian Health and Services Center, AHSC, which is developing a 30,000-square-foot clinic and service center, which will include community gathering space. This project broke ground in April and is expected to complete, be completed in spring of 2018. The final project is the Woody Guthrie Project. This is a workforce housing project being developed by Rose CDC, and it'll include about 64 units, 64 housing units.
Thanks. On the first, I didn't catch the name, maybe it was the Oliver, or I think it was the one before the Oliver, that Prosper Portland will own, the 54-unit mixed-use facility. I just didn't remember. Are there a lot of residential properties that Prosper Portland owns, and how are those managed?
This is, this will be the only residential property that we own today. So, when we had, before the Portland Housing Bureau was created, I believe that there was at least one property with, under, within our portfolio at the time that transferred with the Housing Bureau. But I'm going to look to Fay for confirmation on that, or Tony. There were two properties at the time. But within the last, since 2009, this is the first residential property that we will have, that we will own. And it does have a commercial component to it, but yes, it is, it is unique.
Interesting, and so is that being done, then, in kind of partnership with, I mean, we have been at a lot of meetings with the city about, you know, and the county about affordable housing, and just kind of wondering if this is an intentional, I don't know, part of your future, you know, is being more heavily invested in affordable housing? And, I don't know, trying to understand where the lines are between what the city's doing and what Prosper Portland will be doing, then.
Sure. So, it's a great question, and we actually have an intergovernmental agreement with the Portland Housing Bureau that helps to clarify the relationship and who's on first for what. So, the easiest way to understand it is that the Portland Housing Bureau is really responsible for those, you know, those units and those investments that are between 0 and 60 percent of median family income. And so, places where you have a majority of units or investment where it's within that range, the Portland Housing Bureau is front and center. We have within Lentz and Gateway recently invested in projects that have up to 80 or 100 percent of median family income. And within the North Northeast Community Development Initiative, we are actually looking at homeownership up to 120 percent, so that, you know, that's sort of thought of as workforce, which is above the set-aside portion, is an area in which we have coordinated with the Housing Bureau, but where we have been in the investor seat for that. And so, this one fits more squarely in that later bucket, and so it made sense that we would be the organization to own it.
Thanks.
All right, I'm going to push that topic a little bit more here, because, as James said, you are almost at the end of our schedule of hearings, and we spent a considerable portion of time with the county and with the city, and even to some extent with Metro, discussing affordable housing. We also know within your budget, money that comes to you from the city of Portland is targeted towards that topic. So, I would like you to expand on that a little bit more, and I would also like to understand better how your vision of how you fit in the affordable housing conversation, what is your vision and how that syncs up with the city of Portland?
Is that, are you, do you want to proceed? Yeah, so I'll seek to answer that. As Kimberly has already stated, that the relationship between Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau comes in the form of an intergovernmental agreement. And in the development of new affordable housing units, Prosper Portland annually, as I said, enters into the IGA, and that agreement that Prosper Portland has with the Portland Housing Bureau effectively does three things. It, one, provides a mechanism to reimburse the Housing Bureau for tax increment funding affordable housing projects in nine remaining urban renewal areas, based on the housing set-aside policy, where about 45 percent of all new TIF debt proceeds go towards the delivery of affordable housing. Second, it identifies the lead agency, as Kimberly has said, you know, determining who's on first and who's on second. It identifies the lead agency on mixed-use and mixed-income projects from a project management perspective. And for some projects that are majority affordable housing, the Housing Bureau will act as the lead agency, and other projects that might be the majority, commercial or other use, but Prosper Portland will be the lead agency. On the 9101 Foster Project in Lentz, Prosper Portland was the project manager and took over as the lead developer as well, when the developer pulled out of the project, so it was out of necessity. And three, the purpose of the intergovernmental agreement between Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau is to coordinate on a regular basis on the planning and implementation of the urban renewal action and community action plans. So, that speaks, again, sort of in repeating some of the things that Kimberly has said, but to your larger question about the overall vision of where Prosper Portland fits in this affordable housing discussion, I think we've had lots of conversations about it. I definitely feel like it's on everybody's mind about, you know, what that should look like, and I think that philosophically, we've all sort of made a decision that just writing a check is not sufficient, but that we do want to be thoughtful in that planning process, hence the formalized relationship with the Portland Housing Bureau and how funding is, how, you know, their participation in projects and how money is spent.
Would it, am I oversimplifying, or could I conclude from your description of the intergovernmental agreement helping to determine who is the lead on what type of projects, that it is more likely that Prosper Portland would be involved in the mixed-use? And I think Commissioner Myers had talked about commercial affordability, that it might be more likely that you would be the lead on those types of projects as opposed to the city or some other entity? The Housing Bureau being the lead on predominantly residential? Is that...
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good way to think about it. You know, we really are the city's economic development agency, and so we see ourselves as being front and center on commercial, industrial, retail spaces and development, but also on community spaces, as we are the city's community development agency. The Portland Housing Bureau really is the city's affordable housing agency, and so we play a supporting role, a coordinating role, but we, you know, we recognize that as the community development entity, we want to, you know, we want to work closely with them, and so the board has been very involved in making sure that that's the case.
A good example, it just got open this last week or so, is the Small House Project out in North Portland that we partnered with a whole lot of agencies to help that happen. It's our property, so we're basically letting them use it for, I think, a year or so. It's for homeless women. It's really a pretty neat project. So, we're not, our direct mission isn't housing, but we're partners in it on the Broadway Corridor, the post office project. 30 percent of that project is the Housing Bureau's investment, and on our executive team is, the Housing Bureau is part of that group, and we're strong partners, let's put it that way.
Sure. And so, then, sorry, I think because I asked a lot of questions, I think part of it got missed. I was just wondering, is Prosper Portland going to be managing the residential property, or how will that part work? Because we learned...
Yeah, I think that's a good way to think about it. You know, we really are the city's economic development agency, and so we see ourselves as being front and center on commercial, industrial, retail spaces and development, but also on community spaces as we are the city's community development agency. The Portland Housing Bureau really is the city's affordable housing agency, and so we play a supporting role, a coordinating role. But we, you know, we recognize that as the community development entity, we want to, you know, we want to work closely with them, and so the board has been very involved in making sure that that's the case.
A good example, it just got open this last week or so, is the Small House Project out in North Portland that we partnered with a whole lot of agencies to help that happen. It's our property, so we're basically letting them use it for, I think, a year or so. For homeless women, it's really a pretty neat project. So we're not, our direct mission isn't housing, but we're partners in it on the Broadway Corridor, the post office project. 30% of that project is the Housing Bureau's investment. And on our executive team is, the Housing Bureau is part of that group, and we're strong partners, let's put it that way.
Sure. And so then, sorry, I think because I asked a lot of questions, I think part of it got missed. I was just wondering, is Prosper Portland going to be managing the residential property, or how will that part work? Because we learned in talking to the city that part, you know, of passing, you know, the huge bond was that these would be city-owned properties and that the city on those bond-funded properties was trying to figure out what made the most sense in terms of management. It seems like a big investment to manage 54 units, you know, as an organization.
Yeah, so we anticipate having a third party as the manager.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm the newest member of this group, and so I was hoping you could explain the district's $15 million special levy. I didn't know you had a levy, and what the origins of this levy are.
I get to take that one. That's a great question. I learned something in learning how to answer it. The passage of Measure 50 in 1997 made changes to the way taxes are collected in urban renewal districts. In order to assure that districts established before December 6, 1996, could continue to collect sufficient property taxes to pay indebtedness to carry out urban renewal plans, laws implementing Measure 50 allowed the city and Prosper Portland to determine an amount of maximum tax increment revenues that could be collected each year in an urban renewal district, and also provided for three methods for collecting tax increment revenues. The city designated four pre-1996 urban renewal areas as "Option III" districts, quote-unquote, which collect a fixed amount of taxes on the incremental assessed value of the urban area, and also may impose a citywide special levy in amounts such that the sum of the sum of the taxes, revenues, and special levy does not exceed the maximum tax increment revenues. That was a big sentence. These districts are Airport Way, Downtown Waterfront, South Park Blocks, and the Oregon Convention Center. Because Option III districts were mature and expected to complete their plans relatively soon, and to limit the effects of Measure 5 impacts on government tax collections, including the City General Fund, the City Council opted to limit the aggregate amount of special levy for Option III districts to $15 million. The City Council, at its discretion, can increase or decrease special levies for each urban renewal area and may decide how much of the total of all special levies go to each of the four districts, provided such requirements are met. At present, the plan is to keep the special levies for an Option III urban renewal areas at a total amount of $15 million. All four districts are anticipated to be paid off using the existing special levy between 2021 and 2025.
So in 2026, would it be possible, you think, I mean, tax-supervising Conservation Commission, conservation being the operative word here?
Right.
And this question, is in 2026, do you think it would be a possibility that that levy might decrease?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's a fair answer.
That's the current plan.
I've got a note.
Okay, any other thoughts? I have the last question. This is kind of a technical question. In each of the last five years, we've noticed that the district has overspent its budget. The most recent violation of this overspending was in fiscal year 16, where the district exceeded the appropriations by over $500,000. Can you tell us what the steps are that you've taken to eliminate these over expenditures in the future?
Thank you, and I have the last answer.
Okay.
So Prosper Portland has exceeded budget appropriations in one or more appropriation categories in various amounts over the last several years. Most years have been relatively small amounts, with the exception of fiscal year 2015, 2016, where there was an over expenditure of $500,000 in one category. Cases of over expenditures usually result from invoices that were received after June 30th for work that was accomplished prior to June 30th, and therefore must be recorded against the prior year. Due to the capital nature of Prosper Portland's budget, projects and related contracts often span fiscal years. Therefore, it is sometimes difficult to project the exact amount of work that will be completed and invoiced by the end of a specific fiscal year. In the case of the last fiscal year, staff misunderstood the timing of the expenditure and in which fiscal year it would be recorded. Unfortunately, it was brought to the extension of finance staff after the final budget amendment was completed. However, it was a required expenditure that was based on a legal commitment that had established budget in the following fiscal year. Prosper Portland finance staff regularly work with project and program staff to refine estimates of timing to manage the budget and schedule budget revisions as needed to address the timing of commitments. To help prevent further over expenditures, financial planning staff began more in-depth budget management training in the fall of 2016 that included training on budget structure, tools to manage budgets, and how work being completed will be recorded and measured against fiscal year budgets. More one-on-one training and additional tools are planned for the upcoming year, including standard new employee training on financial management specific to Prosper Portland.
Great, training is always important for those kind of issues. But you also have a contingency fund. Would that be appropriate use for a contingency fund, when something like that happens?
For additional training?
No, no.
Or, excuse me, for this kind of, for this kind of over, of overage?
So you don't overexpend the appropriation, you dip into your contingency?
Correct. I'm not sure from an accounting standpoint how that would work. My guess is--
Barnes to the rescue.
Yeah, Tony will--
Commissioner, we have a contingency in every one of our funds, urban renewal funds and other funds. It requires a budget amendment to appropriate contingency, out of contingency into a line item. These over expenditures usually happen after June 30th, when we're accruing expenditures back to that fiscal year, so there's no opportunity to appropriate funds from contingency. That's a challenge.
So in this case, you just didn't know it was going to happen on June 30th, and you closed the book.
Right.
So the follow-up question is, between now and June 30th, do you have budget amendments planned?
We are looking this week at final expenditures planned and inquiring with staff to see what's happening by June 30th, what might come in the door in July. And if we need to, we have a final board meeting on the 28th. We can schedule that for.
I would just add to this answer that, you know, the accounting controls and budget mechanism that the staff here uses are excellent, and the accounting staff has won numerous awards for their governmental accounting expertise. And Chair Kelly and I serve as audit liaisons, and we can speak to their good work, so.
Excellent. Yeah, it's just like you said, it's a matter of getting in touch with the construction people to say, hey, what's the work going to look like on June 30th?
Right.
So it's not an issue of not knowing the accounting, it's an issue of talking with the construction agent.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Can I have a follow-up? Sure. I understand from your remarks that you're also considering a host of metrics. Could this be one of them, perhaps? That the, I mean, five years in a row, I'm new here, and this is my first year looking at these different organizations, and this is an unusual, I've learned that this is unusual across the spectrum for the different organizations that I've seen this year.
Right, and I would just add to that, that we hear budgets, you know, that are ranging in the billions and budgets that range down to the tens of thousands, and this is definitely an outlier to have budget issues, you know, for multiple years in a row like this, and topping out at half a million dollars.
I mean, I don't know if it would be a metric or not a metric, but we take it seriously in the degree to which we are training staff, I think speaks to that. And so we, you know, I think the other over expenditures have been in the $10, $15 range. And so, you know, we've gotten clean audits through those, so I don't believe that we have, you know, a significant kind of challenge in terms of control of expenditures, but we are taking it seriously, and we are working with staff to make sure that this year it doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for your contributions to this discussion. Could you see if-- Thank you.
No, no one has signed up.
Okay. With no other speakers, I will now close our hearing and open up a meeting of the, a regular meeting of the TSCC. The commissioners have any comments on this budget?
Nope.
No? Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to the Executive Director for his review.
Okay, I have two comments. One of them has been just pretty thoroughly covered. The over expenditures are a violation of budget law.
Are a violation of budget law and need to be addressed. The other thing is the transition that this, that the evolution of the organization as indicated by the new name. I have found, I've been in my job for four years, and I've found it hard to get a handle on what the organization really does, and I've discovered an awful lot that I didn't know about, and I don't think people know about. And I've tried in my weekly update, which some of you get and read, to showcase situations where Prosper Portland is doing things you wouldn't expect of an urban renewal agency. So anyway, let's just partner some more, because I'm glad to show that stuff up, because communication is so important.
I was just noticing your new tagline, "Building an Equitable Economy." That's very innovative for a development agency, it seems to me. Okay, with that, may I have a motion authorizing the commission to sign the certification letter as recommended by the staff?
Subsume.
A second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion passes, and that will close the TSCC meeting. It's back to you.
Thank you. I really wanted, that was, you know, been doing this for a few years now, and this was the most interactive, best questions, few surprise questions, what I think is great. So thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your service.
Good to work with you.
Good to work with you. Okay, we will go back to the PDC meeting and adjourn for a few minutes for a break, and we'll be back at quarter to four. Take on action item number nine, Report 1720, Resolution 7236, adopting the annual budget of Prosper Portland for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018. Mr. Barnes, come forward. We're 10 or 15 minutes behind, so as we go through these items, I'm going to ask everyone to be expeditious, especially since my car will probably have its parking expire before we get done.
Good afternoon, Chair Kelly, Commissioners. Tony, Executive Director Branum, I'm Tony Barnes, Budget Officer. I'm here to present the 1718 recommended adopted budget. That's before you today. I'll be walking through minor adjustments recommended by staff for, since council approval. I'll talk briefly about how the budget aligns to strategic planning goals and the business plan investment categories that we've been refining over the last several months. Real briefly, since April, the last time the budget was before you, it was approved by City Council. City Council included several changes. There was a technical adjustment of $5.5 million to, in a reduction in housing, to align the set-aside budget to the Portland Housing Bureau budget based on project timing, mainly related to projects in North McAdam. There was also additional dollars aligned with our strategic plan goals that we requested for the Small Business Increase Program, full funding, $87,500 that was added back to the budget. $142,000 was added back in one-time funding for the Film and Video Office, and another $66,000 for Venture Portland, Venture Portland's Catholic Investment Initiative for business districts in North and East Portland. Now, included in today's recommended action, there are several technical adjustments. Following the budget approval by City Council and the TSCC certification, the board may make changes up to 10% in any one fund for the adopted budget. We're recommending minor adjustments in several areas across the board for the removal of planned property sale income related to one waterfront place that impacts River District and Downtown Waterfront. We've programmed final positions for next, budgeted positions for next fiscal year. It's 84 full-time equivalents and three limited-term positions. That's down from 93 positions that was in fiscal year 14, 15. The three limited-term positions in the budget are specifically for addressing HR capacity over the next year, and also restoring the Film and Video Office, since that was added with the General Fund add-back, but also adding a position for equity goals with the Broadway Corridor Project. So that's added specifically to the River District budget. We do have slight adjustments also from the Portland Housing Bureau in several urban renewal areas that are minor, and also some final budget adjustments from our third property management companies in several areas as well. So it's about fine-tuning the budget based on the latest estimates. In total, resources for next fiscal year, we're recommending a budget of $346.9 million. The major change is in property income, where we are reducing property sales related to one waterfront place, so that impacts the five-year forecast of resources for River District and Downtown Waterfront budgets. It doesn't impact any projects or programs in next year's recommended budget. On the expenditure side and total requirements, total requirements are $346 million. That's a reduction of $8.6 million, mainly due to taking dollars out of contingency, which are related, again, to that property sale assumption being taken out of the budget, which impacts programming for later years in the five-year forecast. Total expenditures are programmed at $216 million, an increase of, a net increase of As illustrated here, there's a decrease in administration. That's mainly to the reallocation of staff out of administrative categories and into specific projects and programs based on a fine-tuning of our allocation of where staff are working, as well as an adjustment from the Portland Housing Bureau based on timing of projects. And property redevelopment, mainly working with staff allocations, so some of the money came out of administration into property redevelopment. A good example is Broadway Corridor, the added limited-term position there is included in that number. As illustrated in this graph, beginning fund balance, cash on hand for next year's budget still represents about 50, almost 50% of the resources for next fiscal year, followed by new debt proceeds, representing about $117 million. We adjust debt proceeds based on the need for resources as projects spend over the forecast. General fund from the city, based on the city-approved budget, is $5.8 million, about 2%, which is pretty consistent with prior year's current year. We originally submitted a 5% cut and also some add package, decision packages. This is less than a 5% cut overall. And then to illustrate expenditures, housing is 43% of total expenditures at $92.6 million. The vast majority of that, as illustrated, will be illustrated in the next agenda item is for the intergovernmental agreement for set-aside resources with Portland Housing Bureau. About $1.8 million is for homeownership with the North Northeast Community Action Plan, and then another $7.7 million with the parcel three development in North McAdam for implementing that project. Property redevelopment remains a significant level at 40% as urban renewal projects spend out in Lentz, are programmed in Gateway, and Downtown Waterfront and River District, Old Town Chinatown investment or strategy. And then administration's around 6%, $13.54 million, which is consistent with the current year budget. Briefly like to show this, to show the budget's alignment with our strategic plan and how resources are allocated, both TIF and non-TIF resources, between the four goals. For neighborhoods, there's about $262 million. Vast majority is TIF. That's related to investments, as I just mentioned, in Lentz, Downtown Waterfront, River District, Gateway. Wealth creation is about $38 million. It's largely TIF. It's tied largely to the North Northeast Community Action Plan. $19 million for partnerships, expanding partnerships. It's a combination of General Fund and Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative resources. And jobs, $29 million. Vast majority is related to non-TIF resources such as General Fund, NISO. And these resources over five years, I'm switching over from a one-year look to a five-year look. That's the much larger numbers here. That's the much larger numbers here. One other view that we provided city council with in May was how five-year plan investments are beginning to be aligned to the business plan, how they fit into the business plan. So the three main categories we're working with are infrastructure and grants, mission-related investments and program-related investments, as we discussed with the Tax Supervising Commission. The vast, 43%, the majority is related to program-related investments, maximizing public benefits where there would maybe be a return on principal but not always a return on investment or below-market return on investment. Mission-related investments would have, meeting all the, all the policy goals of Prosper Portland, but having closer to a market return to sustain future investments on a revolving basis, long-term. And real briefly, looking, kind of drilling down from that graphic, those investments really change from URA to URA as we look at specific projects and programs where neighborhood URAs have a high proportion of program-related investments, grants and infrastructure. In central city, urban renewal areas have a higher percentage of mission-related investments or equal mix of investments. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the presentation or any elements of Exhibit A to the resolution, which details the appropriations being recommended for adoption.
I think to this stage in our budget process, we've all seen it quite a few times. Well, I'm guessing that we can get a vote on this.
Right. So moved?
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you.
Item number 10, action item authorizing the intergovernmental agreement with the Portland Housing Bureau for the implementation of affordable housing set-aside policy and for the purpose of operating and administering the Economic Opportunity Initiative Program. Report 1721 Resolution 7237.
Good afternoon again, Chair Kelly, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham, I'm Tony Barnes, Budget Officer.
I'm Courtney Cohn, Budget Analyst.
So Resolution 7237 is requesting approval for the 1718 intergovernmental agreement with the Portland Housing Bureau. Since 2010, Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau has entered into intergovernmental agreement to fund the housing set-aside and in turn receive funds for Prosper Portland to implement the Economic Opportunity Initiative. Prosper Portland provides the Housing Bureau with 45% of all new TIF proceeds as part of the agreement since the set-aside policy amendment in 2015. PHB, Portland Housing Bureau, uses these resources to create new affordable units and rehab affordable units, as well as implement affordable homeownership. The Economic Opportunity Initiative funding provided to Prosper Portland through the contract helps implement strategic plan objectives of creating living wage jobs and helping small businesses own people of color. I'm going to hand over the presentation to Courtney to discuss in more detail the components of the agreement, and we also are joined by Carl Dinkelspiel of the Portland Housing Bureau. And we'll hand it over.
Great. So this agreement uses partnerships to achieve goals for widely shared prosperity. Such partnerships include Portland Housing Bureau and about 20 or so nonprofits that we work with on our Economic Opportunity Initiative. The agreement also supports the strategic plan goals for job creation. It supports healthy and vibrant neighborhoods that respect the diversity of their residents. It also provides resources to encourage growth and success of small businesses, particularly those owned by people of color. This agreement is similar to the agreement from fiscal year 2016, 17. It establishes an annual budget, terms and conditions for transferring TIF and community development block grants between Prosper Portland and the Housing Bureau for set-aside and EOI programs. One difference is that the Portland Housing Bureau will assume property management and other support services previously provided by Prosper Portland. The Portland Housing Bureau is responsible for implementing the affordable housing set-aside policy. Prosper Portland reimburses PHB for TIF-related housing, or housing projects. The Housing Bureau is also implementing a portion of the North Northeast Initiative in Interstate Urban Renewal Area. There's $5 million budgeted over five years, which comes from the $32 million available for the North Northeast Initiative, so these are not set-aside dollars. This is the breakdown of the tax increment housing budget for the, this coming fiscal year by Urban Renewal Area. The total is $83.7 million and the majority is programmed in Interstate, Lentz, River District and North McAdam. Here's a broad look at PHB's pipeline, current pipeline. There are 24 active PHB projects, 18 of those using tax increment financing. $450 million in total development costs of that $110 million is TIF. Then there are 1,550 TIF-funded affordable units planned approximately, which will house families and individuals affecting thousands of Portland residents. In Lentz, some of these TIF-funded projects are Oliver Station, Woody Guthrie, 72nd and Foster. In Interstate, a large portion of the budget is going toward homeownership assistance and the Argyle property. In North McAdam, River Place Parcel III, and in River District, the 90, or the Northwest 14th and Raleigh Site. Again, if there are any questions about this, Carl is here from PHB.
We have any questions?
I have a question. What's the status of the North McAdam moving forward?
Hi. Was my mic on? Yeah, yeah. Carl Dinkelspiel, the Senior Program Manager at Portland Housing Bureau for the multifamily housing program. And you're asking about the parcel III project, right, with Bridge Housing? Yeah, we're in the, still in the middle of negotiations with them. There's a, still a budget gap, financing gap, which we've been negotiating with them quite regularly on, has not been closed as of today.
When do you anticipate a break ground?
Well, so the, the original ground break, I think, was groundbreaking was in October of this year, yeah. But obviously it's dependent on closing that budget gap.
So when do you anticipate you'll break ground?
Can't answer that question at the moment, just simply because the, the gap is, there's a request for resources from PHB that exceeds our authority to, that exceeds our budget authority.
So is it a dead deal?
The developers are still working to close it in some other way.
Be interesting to have follow-up.
What's that?
It'd be interesting to get follow-up as it unravels or as it goes forward, hopefully.
Yeah, I'm happy to describe that for you in person.
I guess I've got a question I'm interested in. When I think about Prosper Portland and the Housing Bureau and we have our commission, can you just give me a quick overview about the oversight for the Housing Bureau and how that's done?
Oversight in terms of our projects? Yeah. Yeah, so...
Or the agency in general?
Yeah, so the, obviously our authority starts with the city council, all of our, as opposed to you guys who have a board, right? Our board is obviously the city council. Our process works similar, I think fairly similar to yours in that we have a housing investment committee that I'm on and the six or seven other senior managers and Tony's on it as well, that, that review all the projects, just similar to what, what PDC does. Once those are, those are approved, that goes, depending on the amount of the budget, whether it's, if it's over $3 million, it goes to the city council. If it's under that, then our executive, then our director has the ability to sign off on, on that project. All property transfers have to go to city council.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm just going to make the comment that my observation about that for years has been that it seems like it would benefit the city council and it seems like it would benefit the Housing Bureau to have a commission like ours. Just going to make that comment go on the record saying that. So we have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you for the, to the Housing Bureau for coming over today.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, too. Our next item is number 11, action item 1722 Resolution 7238, authorize interfund loan of $120,000 from Enterprise Loan Fund to the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative to fund physical improvements of the property located at 512 Northeast 42nd. Courtney Cohn and Dana, she's not here. You're here, but you're not coming up?
No, it's just me, sorry. And then later, later it'll be Michael DiMarco, the Executive Director of our 42nd Avenue. So good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair Kelly and Executive Director Branham. I'm Courtney Cohn, Budget Analyst at Prosper Portland. So the action you have in front of you today is an interfund loan in the amount of $120,000 from the Enterprise Loan Fund to our 42nd Avenue, a Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Urban Renewal Area for physical improvements of the property located at 5012 Northeast The objective of this interfund loan is to provide resources for tenant improvements to our 42nd Avenue and PI District in order to maintain commercial affordability in the district. This directly supports Prosper Portland's strategic plan goals of creating healthy neighborhoods and fostering wealth creation within communities of color and low-income The property is located on Northeast 42nd and Alberta. Our 42nd Avenue is selling the property to a local business and offering tenant improvements that will allow for community businesses to be able to afford local rents. Our 42nd Ave will receive $120,000 in fiscal year 2017, 18, and will repay the loan plus about 1% in interest over the next five years. The repayment is equal to 30% of our 42nd's forecasted tax increment, which is conservatively forecasted. This type of loan will be available to all six districts. The interfund loan is from the contingency of the Enterprise Loan Fund, so there are still funds available to support other projects. So once again, the action in front of you today is to authorize an interfund loan of $120,000 from the Enterprise Loan Fund to the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Fund for physical improvements of the property located at 5012 Northeast 42nd Avenue. So if you have any questions on the logistics of the interfund loan, I can answer those. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Michael DiMarco, the Executive Director of our 42nd Avenue.
Welcome.
That's never happened in my whole three years. Not seen at all.
Well, thanks for having me here today. This is kind of another step in a process that you helped start when you decided to fund the MPI Opportunity Fund. This was the first project that utilized those, those funds. It's a really important project for us. It represents an opportunity for us to keep some of our community entrepreneurs in the community. Right now, we have, I think we have, we have six tenants in the building. We have Guillermo Navarro, who owns Iron Art of the Northwest, Vanessa Guzman, who owns Portland Bloom, which you can see on the corner of the property there, Ted Snyder, who owns the Cully Farm Store, Inger McDowell, who owns With Love from Portland, and we also have, we're home to two nonprofits that really are mission-aligned nonprofits. This is a really great deal. It's a, it's a really great project. We had a community partner that came to us and said, "Look, we started on 42nd Avenue, we're a construction firm, our yard is on 42nd Avenue and we would like to reinvest in our community. What do we need to do to make this project work?" And so we talked about what we needed to do to make the project work, and the way this, this deal is structured, essentially, they're going to come in, do about $300,000 worth of improvements, and then we're going to lease back the entire thing. The idea behind this, this interfund loan, loan is that we will be able to contribute to the project, to those building improvements, and we will get the building back at a below-market lease rate. Over the course of time, we will actually recoup most of the funds by managing the property, but it, this is really the part that makes the deal go for us. We hope to do more projects like this. This is something we consider to be a really wise investment for our community. It allows us to offer accessible and affordable lease rates to these existing businesses, and the market is here now. So while we would love to be able to do this with the resources that we have set aside this year, we really need Prosper Portland's continued help in being nimble to take advantage of these opportunities as they arise. That's just about all I have to say about it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Commissioners? I think this is a project that we can be excited about and get behind, so I'll take a vote.
So moved?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you for coming in. Thanks to both of you.
Thank you so much.
Action item number 12, authorizing the Executive Director to amend the disposition and development agreement with Portland State University for redevelopment of multiple properties within, in the university district area and university place site. Report 1723 Resolution 7239. Amy.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So the item that I'm bringing for you today proposes amending the current DDA that we have, or disposition development agreement, excuse me, that we have with Portland State University to support their effort to prepare and develop three projects, the Jasmine Block, Budget Rent-A-Car, as well as the University Place Sites. Prosper Portland's investment in the PSU projects really have three objectives: to support the professional development of a diverse student body by increasing their access to higher education environments in the urban context, to spur local economic growth through the education and research and job trainings, as well as create the new partnerships among the educational institutions, public agencies and private businesses for shared investment in Portland's central city. By way of just quick background, so the DDA is related to the city council's direction to reduce the impact of urban renewal on taxing jurisdictions, and that included closing the education URA. At the same time, the city council wanted to maintain its commitments to PSU that were originally contemplated under the URA plan. The, these commitments were then captured in a DDA with, with the university. The overall approach of the agreement was to identify these multi-use, multipurpose projects where private businesses can be encouraged to co-locate in conjunction with higher education facilities. And so our investments typically go into the ground floor, the private, commercial, tax-generating uses within these projects. And it really does pair nicely with, with the projects and our investments, which further PSU's mission of connecting the urban and academic environments, as well as our focus on building more equitable economy for all Portlanders. The projects here are identified on the map that are covered under the agreement. We'll be focusing on those highlighted in blue today. And so the first project to review is the Jasmine Block. PSU is entering into a design phase for the redevelopment of what will become the Fourth and Montgomery Building, and the project is really a unique partnership. and Montgomery Building, and the project is really a unique partnership amongst Portland State, as well, as well as Oregon Health and Sciences University, Portland Community College, and the City of Portland, all who will own space within the building. These will offer, there will be a wide variety, really, of kind of academic and professional training programs in areas including public health, education, and, and PCC's dental programs. And in fact, PCC is actually moving their suite of dental programs from their Sylvania campus over to Fourth and Montgomery with the goal of better connecting its students to others that are pursuing the higher-level degrees so they can gain the exposure there, and also understand and experience some of the benefits of what it's like to work in an urban setting. The school will also include a dental clinic that serves as a teaching facility, but will provide dental care for local patients. The project will generate tax, tax increment through a combination of private retail and commercial space that will be programmed into the building. It will be constructed on the Jasmine Block, which is a three-quarter block that we currently own, but we lease to PSU right now for its carpool parking lot. We committed to conveying the site to PSU for the construction of the building. Currently, PSU is pursuing state funding to match its local dollars for development. While the state requires a local match, it doesn't recognize land value as an eligible source, and so Prosper Portland will provide a development grant to PSU that's equal to the land's appraised value of $7.49 million to be invested into the development and construction of Fourth and Montgomery. PSU would be obligated to return the funds to the agency if they are not used by June 2021, which is when the project's expected to be completed. Later this summer, Prosper Portland will enter into a purchase and sale agreement to convey the land to PSU for the development at the price of $7.49 million. The agreement will include a transaction of $150,000 fee that will be paid by PSU at time of closing. These funds will then be reallocated to the two URA funds. In terms of timing, I mentioned that they are, that the project is getting ready to go through design, and then construction is expected in, in fall of 2019. The DDA will be then amended just to push back the completion date a little bit to 2021. So, I do also want to make a note that in addition to the, the job training and the education that's going to be happening in the, in the building, we should also really make a note about the certified contractors that are going to benefit from the project. The, the total project cost is $100 million, so once, how that translates from our equity policy is $20 million worth of contracts to certified contractors. The next project is the Budget Rent-A-Car site. It's adjacent to PSU's art building and is currently owned by Triment, which was part of its Max Orange Line development. PSU does have longer-term plans to incorporate the art building into a larger redevelopment project that's envisioned really as a design center in addition to the private, commercial, and retail space that would be included. PSU will engage stakeholders to kind of further detail this vision in, in the next couple of years. But in the meantime, PSU would like to activate the site as an interim by locating temporary classrooms on the block while New Burger Hall is being renovated. Triment has agreed to enter into a purchase and sale agreement directly with PSU that would allow this temporary use with the eventual sale to the university at fair market value sometime in 2021. Prosper Portland's investment into the project may either fund the acquisition of the budget site at, at its fair market value, or provide $2 million into an alternative project if acquisition is not possible. The university recently had an appraisal done for the budget site and found that its value has actually more than doubled than the estimated $2 million when we had executed the DDA. Now, it's at $5.84 million. Prosper Portland is, we're proposing to provide the funds, but capping them at the current market value and give those funds directly to PSU for the acquisition of the site, but we will ultimately reduce, with the goal, really, of ultimately kind of reducing our exposure for the site to only increase in value in the future. The increased financial commitment to the budget will then be offset by reducing our commitment to the University Place project. Which brings me to the final project on the docket here. This is one that PSU owns, it's University Place, a hotel that's situated on just under four acres at the very south end of the university district. PSU will be seeking a partner to also construct a mixed-use development at the site that would support the university's priorities of accommodating its future growth while also meeting the city goals to increase the density that would pose opportunities for, for housing, job, job creation. In, in the original DDA, we had committed to investing $13 million into the project. In exchange, PSU would build at least $66 million in taxable real estate assessed value. PSU issued an RFP in 2015, did, but did not move forward with any of the development proposals because they felt as though they didn't align with really what their vision was for the site and that they undervalued the site. And so, what we're proposing here is really an adjustment to the timeline that provides this path for University Place to begin, to be redeveloped and begin generating tax increment, but also implementing some additional clauses that will reduce and potentially ultimately relieve our financial investment should a project not come to fruition. So, under this scenario, Prosper Portland will reallocate a portion of the funds committed for University Place for the acquisition of the budget site that I just mentioned. So, that will reduce our contribution from $13 million to $9.61 million. The project's schedule will be delayed by two years, and so, would begin construction in the spring of 2021. And then, we'll be adding a clause within the DDA that further reduces our investment in the project by $1.3 million a year if construction does not start by spring 2021. And that really equates to the estimated value of potential lost tax increment on an annual basis. Ultimately, if construction has not begun with University Place by fall of 2023, or we haven't identified an alternative project for investment, then Prosper Portland will no longer be obligated to provide funding for the project. That being said, I think that PSU recognizes the opportunity for the site it offers. It also recognizes the, the potential with our investment. With its new president coming into, coming into place in, in August, we look forward to working with him on his vision for, for redevelopment to that site and how it can contribute to the central city. Here's just a brief timeline that provides kind of the key benchmarks for, for the three projects. As you can see with these horizons of the projects, it takes us through the end of the district, which is in 2526. And with that, I would ask the board to approve three actions. So, approve the development grant for the development of the Jasmine Block, approve a purchase and sale agreement for PSU to acquire the Jasmine Block, and approve the terms of the other disposition and development agreement amendments for the Budget Rent-A-Car sites and University Place projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I've got one. I'll go first. You stated that 20% will go to certified firms?
Uh huh.
What safeguards, besides the state prevailing wage, are we expecting to ensure the workforce is diverse and workforce is, you know, that we are strategically meeting our goals for workforce?
Absolutely. So, and I will, PSU is also here, and will be providing a few comments, so I'm happy to connect them with that. I think on, on our end, right, we, we're engaged in the projects during, during the design, during construction, and we will be reviewing also the contracts, so we will be part and parcel with that and helping identify contractors that would also be able to provide services if, if we're running into a problem with that. We are deferring to PSU to go ahead and manage, though, that compliance, so that they know that, that onus is definitely on them.
To manage the compliance of the contracting portion of it?
Correct.
Or the, the workforce portion of it?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, this may be an issue of semantics, but with regards to the, the state funding that you're pursuing and asking for the grant for, to match, we've used the word "pursuing" Oregon state funding?
Right.
Which means it's not yet final, so, which means it's still sort of aspirational. So, say in the circuit, you know, that we approved this to give you the seven, you know, $7,490,000 today. What if the state doesn't? What if you don't get that funding?
Right. So, if the state, we would not transfer, we would not enter into, the DDA contemplates that if they were not successful in getting funding, but we should note that it is ranked highest on the priority list down at the states.
But not guaranteed.
But, no, so they should, they should find out imminently by the end of the month. And so, once we have that, we would be able to transfer the land. If they, if they were not successful in terms of the grant money, they would return the grant money to us.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Jason Franklin from Portland State is here. Do we want to have him come up and answer questions? Franklin.
Good afternoon, Chair Kelly, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. Jason Franklin, Director of Campus Planning, Portland State University, 1600 Southwest Fourth Avenue, Suite 340. So, I just want to say thank you to staff, first and foremost, just a couple of comments, and then I'm happy to answer questions. So, thanks to Amy and Lisa for working through us with these. They've been creative problem solvers and definitely been great to work with, so thanks to them. I would say on all these projects, these are projects that we're looking forward to moving forward on. Obviously, the Jasmine Block project is, is first and foremost, we have hired the design architect, SRG, which is a local farm, firm here, and we expect to begin design in July, right after we hear about state funding, which Amy indicated will be at the end of this month, so we expect to hear from the state on that. We, we think it's a great project, it's an important site for Portland State. Having PCC there with, bringing those folks onto campus is going to be exciting for us, both from the dental program standpoint, but also just as a, as a continual partnership between PCC and PSU. So, a number of PCC students transfer into Portland State, and we want to continue that partnership going forward, and, and this is a, a great project to accomplish that. Also, in the partnership front, of course, front, OHSU, which is a continual partner with PSU, and this is our third or fourth project now with them, in that we can continue to, to grow closer as we move forward with these types of projects. And then, of course, the city and Prosper Portland as a, to round out that partnership. So, it's an exciting project for us. Budget Block, as Amy indicated, we are in the beginning pre-design, kind of thoughts on that project and thinking about what can happen there, looking for private partners and looking, continuing to look for Prosper Portland's experience on that and, and ideas as we move forward. And same with the, the larger University Place, and really looking to see what you experienced, you all get out of the Broadway corridor project, because I think it's, there's some good similarities between what's going on there and what can happen at the University Place site. So, all very exciting projects, and again, we appreciate all the work that Prosper Portland has, has done and, and really appreciate the Commission, Commission's flexibility in looking at how these dollars and properties are allocated. So, happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just have a comment. First of all, I love what you do, I love the partnership, and it's a great project. And I'm delighted to hear you've hired a local firm to do the programming or whatever phase you are with SRG. I would implore you to hire local firms, especially where you have an engineering school and architectural school. And the business school, when an outside firm was hired, I was very, very disappointed to see that. I think together, we have a responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers, yours and ours, to do what we can to support local employment, and you have the opportunity to do that in hiring the engineering, architectural, and construction firms that build these buildings. So, I would implore you to use Portland firms. Thank you.
No more questions, Commissioners? Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you very much. The next action item is number 13, approving terms of a master lease agreement with the City of Portland Bureau of Transportation for the Southwest, Southwest 10th and Yamhill Garage retail space and authorizing Prosper Portland to enter into sublease agreements. Report 1724, resolution 7240.
Good afternoon again. I'm Amy Nagy, Program Coordinator here. So, as the Chair mentioned, this item is asking the board to consider the proposed terms for the master lease with the Bureau of Transportation, for which Prosper Portland will be responsible for the teneting, operations, and maintenance of the ground floor retail spaces at the 10th and Yamhill Garage, and allow the agency to then enter into subleases for that space. The objectives with this project are really to create beautiful and affordable retail space downtown, to prioritize minority and small businesses that, to tenant that space, who will then draw visitors into a unique and eclectic shopping experience and generate revenue to support Prosper Portland's financial sustainability. As a brief reminder, the 10th and Yamhill Garage is a seven-story building with about 22,000 square feet of commercial retail space on the ground floor. It's part of the city's Smart Park Garage System, which is owned by the Bureau of Transportation, also known as PBOAT, and provides almost 800 spaces, short-term parking, that support the downtown retail district. There are currently five retailers that are operating in the building. The garage was identified in the downtown retail strategy as a high priority in the mid-2000s for redevelopment in order to support the growing shopping district. It is really, it's fallen into disrepair, as you can see with the imagery here. It has really dated storefronts, grossly oversized retail spaces, and poor lighting amongst some of the other issues. And collecting, it also collects far below-market rents. It does not reflect, however, the investment that's happening in the surrounding area. Fortunately, PBOAT is moving forward with the renovation project that will address the deferred maintenance and make major improvements to the interior and exterior of the retail spaces, amongst other aspects of the parking garage levels. The project is currently in the design process with construction slated for mid-January, early next year, and the total project cost is $25 million. As some of you might recall, I was here in August 2016, where the board authorized the agency to invest $5 million into that renovation, and this was tied to a prior agreement that we had with PBOAT, which committed the agency to invest funds into a project as a backstop to an energy loan guarantee for Solo Power, the manufacturer. But really, independent of that, of this investment to the garage renovation, we have agreed on terms for a master lease with PBOAT to create high-quality and affordable space for local merchants, with an emphasis on businesses aligned with our strategic plan. Prosper Portland initiated this strategy in response to the transition that we are seeing in the local retail market, and specifically downtown, where it's become really difficult for local retailers to find right-sized spaces that are at a doable price point for them and that actually don't require tremendous amount of improvement to become operable. And so, our strategy really aims to create this sort of much-needed retail hub that reflects the demand of Portland retailers and also encourages businesses owned by people of color and women to take space in the building and capture some of that spending dollars that happen in the downtown market. We have been working with a number of really great partners in order to inform this approach, including Seville's Consultants, the Portland Business Alliance, the Hispanic Chamber, and a number of retailers who have also helped communicate what they would need and what they would like to see in a project like this. And so, that's been invaluable. The retail strategy is three components. It looks at space options, teneting, and leasing. So, as a key aspect of the strategy is the types of space that will be offered. So, as I had mentioned, the current spaces are oversized. In some instances, they're two to six times larger than what most retailers are looking for, and what typically happens in this scenario is that then retailers end up carrying way too much inventory just to make sure they can merchandise their store, which ends up becoming very costly, and it also limits then the number of stores and customers, that customers can choose from and reduces that foot traffic. The reconfigured layout, as you can see here, will have a variety of space types and sizes to appeal to businesses at various stages of growth. So, at the top of this, this diagram here is Morrison, if you can picture it, and across from it is Target. So, we would be subdividing what's now three large retail spaces into eight spaces. We would also be looking at keeping one restaurant and then providing a, providing a market hall for smaller vendors who are wanting to kind of dip their toes into the, into the downtown market. In addition to the types of spaces that we're providing is also the, the quality of space that we're going to be providing, and what we're going to be doing is bringing these into what's really referred to as a warm shell condition. And so, that means that these walls will, will be taped and primed, the floors will be polished, the HVAC will be installed, and so, what we're, what we're putting forth into the market is really kind of an opportunity to plug and play for the retailer, so that they're not then also taking on kind of a mini-construction project involving an architect and a contractor, et cetera, that can be a distraction from their core business and also can be a deterrent from them taking space. We will carry a TI budget as part of our agreement with, with PBOAT that may be available to tenants. The physical improvements really set the stage for the retail teneting. Prosper Portland Prosper Portland will be seeking companies to lease the space that will strengthen the mix of the products and services, and is consistent with the individuality of Portland's shopping scene that tourists and locals are really expect to find, particularly in this area. The tenants are really dependent upon one another for their success in activating their space and cooperatively creating that kind of unique experience. And so, it's really important that these tenant qualities listed here are included in the master lease and will be used as part of the criteria for tenant selection. We aim to attract a range of retailers, but we will be prioritizing the following kind of tenant types as we lease up, and most notably, those companies, as I had mentioned before, that are reflected in our strategic plan, followed by the local retailers, as well as Pacific Northwest-owned brands. It should be noted also that PBOB has been a terrific partner on this front with us as we discuss kind of our teneting goals for the building. They have approved the general uses for the subtenants, and they're really signed on to our strategy, so I thank them for that. We will retain a broker to manage leasing, so part of the broker's activities will also be to be working with us in connecting with the service providers whom we frequently partner with to market the space and identify potential tenants. Additional information, including a tenant application, will be posted on Prosper Portland's website as the details become a little bit more finalized around leasing. Currently, we envision offering kind of a variety of terms depending on the space and the retailer, as we seek honestly to balance both our teneting goals with our business plan goals. So, therefore, as part of the application, tenants will be asked to submit items, including a business plan, industry expenditures, to help assess really their qualification and their potential for success at this location. We will not be required to seek any additional approvals from PBOB on these subleases, just as long as they're consistent with the criteria that I've been outlining. The subleases, however, will be reviewed internally by our Finance and Investment Committee with ultimate approval by Executive Director Branham. So, we will master lease this for 10 years from PBOB with an option for another 10 years. We will not pay a rent to master lease the space, and we will receive a 30% share of the net operating income that's generated from the retail spaces. In addition, we will collect an annual administrative fee of $30,000, and so it should be noted that these two revenue streams are, do not have the same TIF restrictions, and can therefore contribute toward the agency's longer-term business plan. PBOB is requiring that we maintain a minimum rent of $18 a square foot across all of the retail spaces after a two-year stabilization period. We anticipate listing the spacers spaces much higher, somewhere between a base rent of $25 to $40, depending upon the space. And I think there's probably room for increase on that, to be up where the current market is, but we are bringing, we are being relatively conservative at this point, as we're essentially bringing this space online for the first time. We also want to make sure that the businesses we're targeting have access to the space, and so I think we can kind of course correct as we continue. If for some reason the strategy is not working, after a two-year period, if we're not able to lease up past 50%, if our capacity as an agency changes, we would be in a position to terminate the lease before, early. On the other hand, though, as I had also mentioned, with PBOB requiring a minimum lease rate across all the spaces, should the rents fall below that threshold for over a year, and we aren't able to adjust the teneting strategy to increase or decrease vacancy, they may elect to also terminate the lease. However, after all the potential bad news, right, I would also like to reassure us that I am really confident that, based on the feedback that we have received from a whole host of industry partners, from the retailers, that people are really excited about the project, excuse me, and there will be a demand for this space. So, here's a high-level timeline that's kind of charting our course around teneting and leasing as compared to the larger building renovation. So, we will be bringing a broker on in the next couple of months and begin leasing early next year while the building is being renovated. It should wrap up in November of 2018, so with hopes that the retail then would open in early 2019. Don't worry, we'll get there. So, with that, I would ask that the Board approve the terms of the master lease agreement with the City of Portland's Bureau of Transportation for the Southwest 10th and Yam Hill Garage retail space, as well as authorize the agency to enter into sublease agreements.
Thank you, Amy. Any quick questions? We're starting to run up against some timelines, and I've got five people to testify here.
Just a real quick comment. I would encourage you to get a broker on board within weeks of signing the lease.
Okay.
So, first, we have three individuals who want to testify in favor of this. Michelle Reeves from Civilist Consultants, if you could come up, Lisa Frisch from the Portland Business Alliance, and Dave Benson from the City of Portland, PBOB, I mean.
Should we go in that order?
Sure.
Okay. So, I've had my afternoon coffee, I'm going to talk really fast, so I fit into the three minutes. So, my name is Michelle Reeves, I'm a revitalization consultant, I work around the country on improving economic performance in different kinds of commercial districts, and I am super excited about the 10-Y project, and I decided to use excitement as sort of the framework for my comments here today, and I want to talk about some of the reasons I'm excited about this. So, the first one is that this is a super common problem. This super ugly mid-century parking garage plunked down in the middle of a downtown is a huge problem with dated retail space all over the country. So, it is not only really great for Portland to tackle this, but it can become a model for other garages, not only in our city, but around the country. So, I think it's really exciting to be tackling this problem that exists everywhere. The second reason that I'm really excited about this is the location and the size of the project, and I want to talk about both of those things, sorry, allergy season, really quickly. So, location, the first thing I do when I'm asked to work on a site is I walk around and look at what's around it, and there is actually a fantastic collection of retail immediately around this site that I'm in love with. So, the joinery, Malloy Jewelers, White Dress, by the way, this wedding dress store has some of the best lighting in the country, and I use it as an example all around the country for making your space glow from down the street. Watch Works, Michael Allen's, Brooks Brothers, Target, Mont Bell, and Pendleton is coming in as well, so there's a really strong retail node there already. And then, the size of this project allows you to fit into that location and create kind of a critical mass retail node in and of itself, so I think that's super exciting. The third reason I'm sort of double-dogged excited about this project is because it's an opportunity to take public space and align it with the kinds of equity and local economic development goals that Prosper Portland has. So, I want to talk just briefly about the odd retail market that is Portland. We are, I like to joke, we're not a beautiful people, we don't spend a lot of money on stuff, we spend money on food and experience, and it actually creates a really challenging retail market on top of the fact that retail and service are already shifting dramatically from commodities to experience. So, to be successful in the future, our retailers are going to have to be aggregated together, they're going to have to be concentrated to be successful. So, there is no better place to concentrate your retail than in a place where there are large amounts of tourists and high-income spending dollars in one place for work. So, this is a great opportunity if we're going to allow local people to have access to these small retail spaces in a place where they can actually be successful, and where retail of the future is going to be successful. So, I think that's a fantastic opportunity. I do want to make a note that, like the Portland Mercado, to make this work, there is going to have to be a little bit of tenant mixing, it is not just a first-come, first-served. For retail to be successful, you need a cross-pollination between businesses to happen, because that's how retail in a downtown environment makes money, is by businesses interacting and driving sales for each other. So, there is going to have to be some tenant mixing in the project to make sure that everybody is uplifting everybody else, it's not purely a first-come, first-served. And the fourth reason, and not the last reason, but I'm limited in terms of time, is that this space is really reconfigurable. So, Amy gave you a great layout of the spaces, but that idea of creating flexible spaces that can offer a mix of different sizes and opportunities for people is the kind of space that's going to last the longest in terms of not needing to be redeveloped again quickly in the future. So, in short, great potential to create a lot of opportunity for local economic development in the stewardship of the public's hands is just a great project to be involved with, and I've been really excited to be working on it.
Thank you. Lisa Frisch from the Business Alliance.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Lisa Frisch with the Portland Business Alliance. I'm the Downtown Retail Program Director, move this microphone. The Portland Business Alliance partnered with Prosper Portland to support the city's Downtown Retail Strategy Task Force in 2009. Today, Portland Business Alliance reaffirms our support for this project and this renovation as one of the last action items identified in that Retail Strategy Task Force report from eight years ago. I, too, am very excited, my coffee has worn off for the day, but I share Michelle's excitement about this project. Downtown Retail Strategy Task Force consisted of a collection of organizations, including Portland Business Alliance, Downtown Clean and Safe, Prosper Portland, Downtown Marketing Initiative, Travel Portland, and private property owners. They worked together to revitalize the downtown landscape, which is now the super-exciting landscape that Michelle talks about. We did that through a series of projects, included very targeted retail recruitment, expanded marketing programs, physical improvements, and district branding. One of the primary recommendations of the retail strategy was to designate Yam Hill and Morrison as the signature retail streets and the retail core. Identifying these key streets also directed public and private investment along the spine. The report also identified small, medium, and large-scale projects, catalytic developments, really, with the 10th and Yam Hill Garage redevelopment as being the top priority on the list, so we are excited, again, to see this finally coming to fruition. We're happy to report that our collective work has precipitated a turnaround in the retail landscape. Right now, we have about a 4.5% vacancy rate in the Central Business District, that is very tight, that is down from a high of 13% during the recession. We have more than 150 new retailers that have signed on downtown since 2009, many large-scale retailers like Nike, Sephora, H&amp;M, and Target, and a very impressive collection of retail, local retail and restaurants, too numerous to mention, but I do have a list if you are interested. Crafty Wonderland and Boys for Two of the graduates of our Pop-Up Shop program are also included in that list. The city-owned Smart Park garages were built with the sole purpose of short-term parking facilities. These facilities are an integral part of the success of downtown Portland, parking is a very limited resource, and our customers demand low-cost parking. Safety, both perceived and real, has remained a marked challenge at this facility, with frequent reports of car prowls, drug use, biohazards in the garage. Much of this negative activity occurs because of the way the garage was designed, in that brutalist '60s fashion, several points of entry, blah coloring, lack of security, lighting, and limited visibility. I'll do one more part. The planned storefront improvements, lighting, and elevator and stair consolidation should address a lot of the challenges around design and function. The revised layout and resizing of the retail spaces is consistent with what we are hearing from local tenants on these types of spaces that they would like to lease in downtown Portland. By increasing the number of storefronts, we will see better street activity and a greater number of pedestrians, which is a key goal of the retail strategy. Thank you again, Commissioners, for taking the step towards supporting downtown retail.
Thank you. Dave Benson from PBOB.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name's Dave Benson, I'm the Parking Services Group Manager for the Bureau of Transportation, and I'll try to be very brief.
Thank you.
You bet. I appreciate the opportunity to rescue you today regarding a master lease agreement between PBOB and Prosper Portland, allowing Prosper Portland to sublease the retail spaces at 10 and Yam Hill Smart Park Garage. To continue managing this garage as a valuable public asset, PBOB is partnering with Portland Prosper to develop renovation and ongoing management plans. This renovation project provides an opportunity for PBOB to address much-needed deferred maintenance issues in the building, but also improve and modernize the retail spaces. Last year, I addressed the Commission in support of an agreement that allowed PBOB and Prosper Portland an opportunity to negotiate this master lease agreement, and today, I'm here to offer the Bureau of Transportation support to enter into this negotiated agreement. We mutually agree that there is significant need to improve the ground floor retail spaces and in the environment of the building. PBOB's partnership with Prosper Portland will allow this to materialize. We believe that this renovation is an opportunity to support local retailers in the downtown business district. We also believe that this partnership with Prosper Portland through its economic development and asset management focus will provide the best use of these spaces, recognizing the need to support new and emerging businesses in our community, and thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for these three? Next, let's have Jonathan Cullen from the Hispanic Chamber.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Cullen, I'm the Vice President of Business and Economic Development for the Hispanic Chamber, and I know we're short on time, so I'll give you two perspectives that are super important, and we're super excited about this project. We've been working with the agency to look at it from different angles. This is what Prosper Portland meant to me when we said we were changing our names. This is the leadership and the strategies that we expect to see, or we're looking forward to see. One of the things that we hear around here is the breaking of space, you could have four tenants in a block, small businesses can't afford. On January, I heard for the first time that we were charging $45 a square foot in downtown Portland. For 3,500, $5,000 square feet, that's a significant amount of dollars. If we're doing it at 600, 500, 700, it allows a small business to be able to compete in a larger market, because their square footage that they're using is smaller, even though the price point might be a little bit more than they would normally be able to enter. The warm shell allows someone like some of our small businesses that are trying to start not having to put in almost their life savings to start. We just did $151,000 investment into a building for a restaurant that was the livelihood of someone who's worked 10 years, and I'm hoping that this works out. The repositioning of a lot of properties have gotten a lot of smaller businesses out of the equation. We just saw this with the City Grill Building, most of the tenants that were there, especially the minority ones, are gone. We were able to reposition and get some new ones in there, but these are the kinds of things that are happening with the investments that are happening in downtown in this shift. This will be a significant catalyst for our community and for our smaller businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if we could have David Queifner and Doug Peterson, come on up, gentlemen.
Shall I go ahead and go? I'm Doug Peterson, I own Peterson's Convenience Stores, small businesses forum in downtown Portland. We've been very successful, we've been there for 32 and a half years. Our Morrison store, which is in the middle of a block between 9th and 10th on Morrison, has been there for 32 and a half years, been very successful. We are being treated very, very unfairly. All the tenants in the building have been told that they have to leave, everybody's been on month-to-month, I understand that, but everybody's been told that at the end of January, middle of January, everybody has to leave, and there's no guarantees that any of you can come back. We're in the middle of a block there. Now, the other tenants in the building, a lot of them, if they're going to be gone for a year during the remodel of the building, they don't want to come back because they have to establish themselves someplace else. My business plan focuses on the MAX line, the Mass Transit Riders. We have over 900 customers a day come into the store. Altogether, I have 28 employees, and we are a small business, but we've got four stores, and we're successful, and why just say, hey, you're out of there? That's just not fair. And the other thing is, this, our location is in the middle of a block. Most of the major construction is on the end, the elevators and the new storefronts building out to the street are on the end of the blocks, not in the middle. The tenants in the Portland building and the tenants, they were given a first right of refusal. During the construction, Starbucks has been, remained open during the construction of Pioneer Square. I really feel we could remain open during the construction. I was, I've 32 and a half years with my own Peterson stores, before that, I was with Fred Meyer, and I was a merchandise, part of that time, I was the merchandise manager that did the remodels for the stores, working with the construction people, but doing remodels from the store. We never closed a store, we remodeled it and kept the store open during the remodel. The transit line there, the MAX is going to be there stopping, even though the locations are all closed, it's a major transfer station for the streetcar, and also it serves the I really feel there's some way that we should be treated, that we could stay there in the middle of a block, I want to be part of the new program, and I just feel like, just... I want to be part of the new program, and I just feel like just writing us off is just plain wrong. A small business that has been very successful for 32 years should get some credit. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is David Queifner. I'm a consultant and lobbyist for Peterson's, and he's right, we do want to be part of this. We take up less than 10% of this block, and I think the project could look at Mr. Peterson as a mentor to these new businesses. We provide services that are not in this design. People surely want to have nice crafted items and beautiful stuff, but they also need candy bars, they also need sodas, they also need lots of other minor items that they can pick up while the MAX is running. We only stay open when MAX is running. And one of the problems that has not been addressed, and they may be in the design phase for quite a while, because the first design was sent back for review by the Design Commission we testified there, is you've got a serious seismic issue. I brought this to your attention last year. It has not been addressed in the new plans, and the real problem is that once you get over $15 million in a project, which if there's a $25 million budget, guess what? You're there. You have to do the seismic upgrade, which adds another $5 to $10 million to this project. Franz Rad did a nice study for us. He's a licensed structural engineer. He's taught at Portland State for quite a long time. He was president of the American Association of Structural Engineers. You've got 2 million pounds of cars on top of these fledgling businesses. The big earthquake that they keep talking about happens every 300 years, and this has been going on for 10,000 years. Guess what? We're at 317. Each day that goes on, we get a little tiny bit closer to the big one. A better location for these fledgling businesses is in the Pearl District with this new post office development. You've got safe buildings, you've got upscale market around them. You don't have computers. The whole, it's probably not going to be as big a homeless issue. The overhang is what draws any entity who needs someplace to either get out of the sun or out of the rain. But I don't want to sound like the weatherman before the rose parade that says it's going to rain, but which, you know, everybody's so enthusiastic about it, you know, I didn't. But look around downtown. Since 2008, 09, Amazon and the other internet retailers have really hit the retail brick-and-mortar market. Yeah, you've got a nice Apple store, and you've got a Target store, but you also have a lot of open spaces that have, this will not address. Now, since this project was designed, it hasn't been going forward, but still, in spite of that, you've got $130 million building to the east, you've got three very expensive hotels that are being built to the north, and this parking structure, it's not contingent on it. It has had no effect on that. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have further questions from our staff? Do I have a motion?
No.
We have a motion? Second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Let's move on to number 14.
Thank you.
Will Thier. Is going to give us the fastest update in the history of Centennial Mills.
I don't think there's a precaution. They want to stay.
All right, so I will attempt to edit myself, and so if I break and pause, that's what I'm doing. Good afternoon, commissioners. Chair Kelly, I'm Will Thier, Prosper Portland Project Manager, here today to provide an update on Centennial Mills' project and solicit strategic feedback from the board regarding next steps. The primary strategic question that staff is seeking guidance on is what form of disposition should Centennial Mills' transaction take? There are three broad categories: self-performance, public-private partnership, or a straightforward sale, land sale. Staff recommends the third option, but I'll discuss all three options and the pros and cons later in the presentation. So first, let me recap the outcome of staff's recent visit to City Council on March 22nd. At that meeting, City Council passed Resolution 37275 endorsing full site redevelopment. As a matter of due diligence, they also asked staff to work with Portland Housing Bureau to determine the possibility of maximizing affordable housing on the site. Other pertinent feedback from council revolved around the design and public engagement process. City Council voiced support for open access to the Greenway and maximizing equity contracting opportunities during design-construction, and although they made it clear that there were no city funds available for public amenities, they did desire that the ultimate Greenway design not preclude future river access opportunities. Finally, City Council instructed staff to broaden the sources of community input throughout the disposition and development process. So in response to council's direction regarding affordable housing, Prosper Portland staff worked with PHB to model 35% of all units as affordable. Based on the model, staff concluded that a minimum of $15.5 million of public subsidy would be required to achieve this objective. At this time, all River District PHB funds are currently committed to other housing projects, and the process for placement of their general obligation bond dollars is still in the early stages of development. Now, returning to the question at hand regarding the disposition, I just wanted to provide the board with a quick reminder of how the site has changed since demolition is complete, as well as several of the primary development considerations that will exist no matter which disposition process is chosen. So first, the wharf has been removed. Second, under the draft Central City 2035 Plan, the Greenway setback will be expanding from 25 feet to 50 feet, so that's to scale on this image. So that sets the overall building envelope where development can occur. The Tanna Creek Storm Line bisects that envelope and comes with an associated utility easement. Another permitting requirement is the provision of one or more view corridors across the site totaling 25% of the total street frontage along Nato. So in this example, I've broken it up, but generally speaking, in this example, those view corridors could be anywhere between 25 and 50 feet wide. So in turn, those view corridors then set, really, set your building pad site footprints for where you can build a building, and the flower mill exists within northernmost footprint. So as you can see, even with the removal of all the old mill structures, this site still presents quite a number of development challenges. So in addition to those physical site constraints, there are a number of design and programmatic requirements that are also not dependent on the method of disposition. So these items primarily address the 2006 framework principles that you can see there, and in addition to those terms, a developer would also need to achieve Prosper Portland's equity and green building policies, as well as the city's inclusionary housing requirements, which in discussions with council staff, their preference is that that requirement would be met on-site. So having outlined these givens and the known unknowns, we arrive at this decision point per our project decision tree. With the MPU not returning the site, we have a new measure of flexibility for a number of different options that I'll go through now. So this matrix that you see here comprises the three basic disposition options, along with their respective pros and cons. Generally speaking, both financial exposure to Prosper Portland, but also the levels of programmatic control decrease as you make your way down the chart. So direct performance is the highest-risk choice, primarily driven by the large amounts of debt financing that would be required. It does have the benefit of highest access to project cash flows and direct control of all public outreach. However, the staff time required to directly manage a Prosper Portland project would be very, very significant and would pull staff away from other priority projects. In turn, a public-private agreement would allow for partial control of the programmatic, of the programming and public engagement, but would again require significant staff time to manage. It also has the drawback of naturally setting higher expectations for overall public investment, which may or may not be feasible and realistic. Because a public-private deal is more of a relationship than a transaction, the expectations placed upon the public partner often expand over time. On the other hand, a public-private structure may maintain some moderate ability to realize ongoing cash flow returns. So finally, a straightforward sale transaction has several benefits and is the path that staff recommend, given the considerations mentioned in previous slides. For instance, there is low financial risk to Prosper Portland in the event of unexpected entitlement surprises. The simpler structure also enables a clear set of expectations for both parties, leading to a higher probability of success. The challenges to this approach include how to guarantee adherence to the public benefit requirements and a lower level of involvement with community engagement and programming. In order to mitigate these risks, staff recommends adding robust review language into the sale contract that will allow Prosper Portland to course correct, if need be, at certain project milestones. So as we move into the disposition process, whatever that shapes up to be, staff will continue to work on wrapping up several remaining project items, as well as obtaining additional clarity on entitlement considerations, such as the Greenway width that I mentioned, as well as FEMA buyout mitigation expectations. In terms of next steps, staff proposes that a selection, sorry, that a solicitation for offers would be issued this summer with a general transaction structure based on your feedback today. In order to give our stakeholders an early opportunity to provide input, we'll convene a selection advisory committee to review those offers. And per City Council's direction, we'll seek committee members that represent, excuse me, represent both longstanding interest groups as well as other new groups that have been overlooked in the past. Once that committee has provided their input, staff will return to the Prosper Portland Board with agreed-upon terms of a transaction in the early fall or winter. After the developer is in contract, we'll identify another advisory group for input regarding the state historic preservation obligations. Developer would be expected to lead that process, including interfacing with Portland's Historic Landmarks Commission. Prosper Portland, for its part, would hold concept review and approval rights within the contract before the developer moved forward into the final design phase. Staff anticipates that this overall process will look similar in either case of a simple sale or a public-private partnership, but in the case of a public-private partnership, this process would likely become increasingly iterative based upon the specific public-private relationship between the parties. So that is it. What are the board's thoughts? And I think we have some testimony.
We do. Questions? We have Larry Mazur here from Waterfront Pearl. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Larry Mazur. I am here on behalf of Waterfront Pearl residents, of which I am one. Waterfront Pearl's two buildings have 200 units. We are Centennial Mills' adjacent neighbor to the south. We are not here to say, not in my backyard. On the contrary, we believe in your 2006 Centennial Mills Framework Plan and its five key principles: provide open space, capture history, define a community focal point, strengthen connections, and embrace sustainability. We also welcome low- and moderate-income residents as our neighbors. We want to participate in the process. We want to be a member of the selection advisory committee that you will appoint this summer. Prosper Portland appears to be relying on Portland's land use and building codes as a basis for development of this property. We believe that the reliance is inconsistent with the principles set out in the 2006 Plan. The building code reflects the bare minimum. The 2006 Plan does not reflect minimum standards at all. Let me give you an example. The building code requires that 25% of the Nato Parkway frontage be left as open see-through space. That's a minimum standard. The 2006 Plan states that open space is a guiding principle. Prosper Portland has to decide if guiding principles and minimum standards are the same thing. We also have concerns about the development's 10-foot setback from the southern property line. A developer attempting to maximize the southern portion of the property will leave only a narrow alley separating the Centennial Mills' development from our homes. This is depicted in the full development example presented to the City Council. Extreme development will block sunlight from reaching many of our residents. At the very least, treat the southern property line as if it was a street anywhere else in the Pearl and enlarge the current 10-foot setback so it is in keeping with the distance between two buildings on opposite sides of any Pearl thoroughfare. Prosper Portland may be faced with a choice between the highest price or the closest match to the 2006 Plan's guiding principles. We hope that you choose the latter. Make square feet devoted to open space and the number of feet allocated for view corridors part of your bid criteria. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to be heard, and we look forward to working with you on this important project. We would also be remiss if we didn't thank Mr. Thier for answering our numerous questions and keeping us apprised of developments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have 15 seconds to go.
You're the only one today. Thanks. Direction is what they're looking for, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, just a quick question. So in describing the basic sale option, was my understanding that there was an intention to provide some more robust constraints on the development than would otherwise be available? And some of those might address the concerns that were just raised. Is that, was that, am I correct in that understanding?
Yes, that's correct. So, you know, normally, our sale contracts do include our typical equity policy language, our green building policy language, and occasionally other terms, and so we would follow that same model, and we would add, you know, many of these that, or all of these, rather, that I've listed here, and we can get more specific with, you know, with the defined parameters of each of these concepts within the document itself.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the space between your two buildings?
I would have to go measure it. I think it's probably 50 feet, I would say. I'm not sure.
You know, the space between your two buildings?
Well, it could be as much as 40 or 50 feet, and it could be as little as 10 feet.
Okay.
Because it's an angle, it's one angle.
Mike, you know, I have a strong bias that the brokerage community is going to drive the highest value for us, and so I would highly recommend that we hire a broker, interview and hire a broker to market the broadest and try to get the highest price that we can get for it, given the constraints that you've talked about, Will. Seems like you've got a couple of questions around entitlements that you're either going to have to clear up before you take it to market or get those resolved before somebody goes hard on an earnest money deposit. I guess the other thing is, is I would probably encourage us to think about some flexibility. Somebody might want to do the historic building, you know, somebody might want to do the rest of it, not do the historic building, and maybe we'll get lucky and find somebody who wants to do it all. So maybe a little bit of flexibility around what the offering looks like or encourage flexibility on what comes back. And likewise, in terms of an outright sale versus lease versus, you know, some kind of participation, if we could get a tail out of it. And I understand the staff time, obviously, with the post office, we've got a lot of demands on staff right now that we can't really divert, but it might be interesting to see what came back at us that could create some upside long-term, as well as get us the cash in the short term. And thank you for all the work.
Thanks.
You've done a great job.
Seems to me that just, you know, I agree with Mark and the same time, just want to make sure we have as robust a possible, as possible, public process and that our neighbors get their say like they should.
And when we had, excuse me, when we had the open house someplace down the Pearl, I mean, we had what, I don't know, Sea Lisa, but I think we had probably 200 people show up, you know, on a rainy night, and so that outreach is a big deal.
You guys are saying it all. I agree. Does that give you some clear direction?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good work, sir. Now, we need to adjourn. Now, we need to adjourn the Prosper Portland Board meeting, convene Portland Community Investment Fund Governing Board. And I think I need to hand the gavel over to -- I'm going to get used to this, I plan.
All right. Okay. So at this time, we will convene a regular meeting of the Governing Board of the Portland Community Investment Fund. We have two action items today: to approve the minutes of our last Governing Board meeting of February 8, 2017, and to approve submitting an application to the Community Development Financial Institutions Fund for an allocation of New Market Tax Credits. I will now call upon Justin Douglas to present these items. Mr. Douglas.
Chair Cruz, thank you. Commissioners, Justin Douglas, Policy Manager, Executive Director, Branham. I'm here to present an action item for you to consider regarding our application for a round of New Markets Tax Credits. I recognize that our time is running short, Commissioner Kelly, so I will be as succinct as possible. I'll give you just a quick refresher on where we -- how we got to where we are today: the New Markets Tax Credit Program, the roles and responsibilities of you, the Governing Board, versus our Advisory Board. Talk about the application at a very high level. There are some details in your packet. Exhibit B to the resolution provides some more detail on the content of the application, so I'll talk through that. Briefly discuss the project pipeline and where those are located across the city, go into the actions, and then next steps. So Commissioner Morlan Kapuya, as you mentioned during the TSCC hearing, our approach to apply for New Markets Tax Credits is part of our long-term business plan. So the Prosper Portland Board directed staff to create a community development entity in October, and we have done so. This is called the Portland Community Investment Fund. And then back in February was when Chair Cruz was nominated and elected as part of the Governing Board. And since February, we have been working very intently internally and with a staff consultant and our Advisory Board on the application, which has been quite a process. The quick refresher on the tax credit program is this is a federal program that encourages capital investment in low-income communities. You've seen this slide before, but for the benefit of those who may be watching at home, there are significant resources in this program, but it also is very competitive. We are basically assuming that we have a 50-50 shot at getting an allocation this first round, but we're putting our best foot forward, and we think we have a compelling application. The final bullet here just notes the accountability and why we have a Governing Board and why we have an Advisory Board, some of those topics that came up earlier today in the TSCC hearing. So you, as the Governing Board, offer general management and control over PCIF. You appointed the original board. You're going to -- we're going to ask you today to approve the application for a round of tax credits. And then should we receive a round of tax credits, we would be then working with you on the projects that staff are proposing to invest those tax credits in. Likewise, the Advisory Board is just that. They provide us advice on the pipeline, the projects, the goals for what we're trying to accomplish. The seven members of the Advisory Board are listed below. We've had one new member added to the Advisory Board, Gina Woolley, with BICEP, replaced Nathan Teske, who took a job out of the city of Portland. So Nathan stepped down now that he's not representing a Portland organization. And we met with the Advisory Board a week ago Monday to review and approve the application, which I'll get into in a moment. At a very high level, this is what is contained in the application. We will be making a request for $60 million in tax credits. And just to remind you, this is exclusively for Portland. So this isn't for projects in Gresham or Tuolotin or New York. These are -- this is an allocation directly for the city of Portland. As part of the application is really telling a story about what you will do if PCIF is to receive the tax credits. And it's no coincidence that the three strategic priorities for funding these projects are one and the same as those priorities identified in the communications strategy for Prosper Portland, so jobs, prosperity, and neighborhoods. And then the pipeline of representative projects is a part of the application where we say, if we were to get an allocation, these are the types of projects that we might invest in and how those projects would meet those three goals of jobs, prosperity, and neighborhoods. So you've seen this map before. This is the city of Portland, and the gray areas are what are known as low-income communities. I have put stars here that show where our six pipeline projects are in the application, just to illustrate that there is a spread from north and northeast Portland to the Cully Boulevard to Gateway and to the Jade District in Lance. Now, one thing I will also say about the pipeline of projects, which are described in Exhibit B to your resolution, is that they really are merely illustrative. By identifying those projects in the application, we are not committing any sort of resources towards those projects, nor does it preclude additional projects that we might become aware of in the next three, six months as being eligible for the New Market Tax Credits. Rather, they're illustrative, and we think that it paints a good picture of the types of projects that we could invest in that could deliver community benefits. So we are here on June 14th today, where hopefully the Governing Board will approve the application for the tax credits. It is due next week, on the 21st, so we would submit next week. The staff will convene another meeting of the Advisory Board in October. The Advisory Board would like to revisit the pipeline and to say, there might be additional projects that come to fruition over the course of the summer and fall, so we want to meet with them to see other projects that they've identified, because they've been very helpful in helping us identify pipeline projects. And then should we be fortunate enough to receive an allocation, we likely will not here until the end of the calendar year, November or December, and after which point, we would reengage with the Governing Board to figure out which of those projects in the pipeline that you've seen or other projects you might consider investing in. So before I just get to the resolution, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge just all of the work and support from the folks on my team. Michael Gerton, Robert Smith, and Allison Schweiger have all done tremendous work behind the scenes to get information for our consultants to complete this. And I'm also happy to announce, the last time you saw Allison, she was pregnant. Last Monday, she gave birth to baby Nora Elena. So that's why she's not here today. But my team was fantastic. So thank you to the three of you. Again, the resolution before you today would approve the meeting minutes from February and the submittal of an application for a round of 2017 New Markets Tax Credits. I'm happy to entertain questions. And Colin Rowan with Malden Capital, who is helping us draft the application, is also here today. So if you have more technical questions in nature, he would be perfectly posed to answer those for you.
I think that there were at least some good questions being asked by the Oversight Committee about how much we're spending on this. How much are we spending on this? That could end up being a speculative investment if we don't get an allocation.
Right. So you might recall that on February 8th, the Governing Board approved, among a number of different actions, was a services agreement whereby, should Portland Community Investment Fund get an allocation, it would be able to be reimbursed up to $300,000 for staff time, for consultant assistance, for other sorts of purposes.
How comfortable do we feel about the possibility of getting an allocation? Do we feel good about that in general? I mean, I know this is speculation, and some of it may also hinge on the political climate, I assume. Or maybe not. I don't know.
You know, the funding for this round is the third of five rounds of funding for New Markets Tax Credits. So from what I understand, that political climate doesn't necessarily affect this current round of allocations. To your other question, Chair Cruz, again, I think we expect we have about a 50-50 shot of securing an award. Colin has let us know that it's difficult for first-time applicants to get an award. Should we not receive one this year, we certainly will try again next.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion.
All right, thank you. Actually, first of all, do we have any guests that want to speak? Do we? Sorry. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. I'd invite a motion to approve Resolution Number Two.
No move.
I would second, and thank you for including North Dealisal as one of the project potentials in there.
Any further discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very well, then. Resolution Number Two is approved. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. And thank you very much to the members of the Advisory Board present and those not present for your good work and support of this effort. This will conclude the meeting of the Governing Board of PCIF for today. We are adjourned.
Double adjourn. You can read with a pencil.